Call to order the city council meeting of September 1st. Welcome back, everybody, from our August recess. Please rise for an invocation by Councilwoman Liz Mealy, followed by a pleasure allegiance.
As we move into the end of the year, we watch as the daylight wanes more quickly, as leaves tumble, as the light and air of summer give way to the brilliance of autumn and the sparkle of the holidays. Now, when the year winds down and the city begins to wrap up one year and plan for the next, it is particularly important that we strive for compassion, that we think often of the plight of the least able in our community, that we consider closely the needs of everyone in the city, and that we act to benefit everyone equally. Let's bear that in mind as we move to the end of the year. And in the meantime, may everyone have a safe and happy Labor Day weekend.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of city council meeting minutes dated August 4th, 2016. Mrs. Frank? Motion, a second, to approve this, please.
Come on.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on those? Mrs. Frank, on the approval of the minutes?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are approved. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for items on the agenda tonight, so we'll move on to the next item, which is a presentation, a quarterly update that we received from Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Traumer from Penn Strategies. Gentlemen? How are you guys this evening?
Good.
Good.
Good. President Williamson, Vice President Allison, members of council, members of the administration, Mayor Campana, thanks for inviting us here to provide you with our scheduled quarterly report. We do this in addition, this is related to our contract and is a requirement that we keep members of city council and the general public informed of our activities on behalf of the city. And we also try to keep in regular communication with members of the council and the administration and provide them with weekly reports as well. But I'm just going to provide a very general overview of what Penn Strategies has been working on and then open it up for questions if that's appropriate. First off, we've been working in conjunction with council and the administration and others to enhance our relationship with the county. There are a number of challenges facing the city of Williamsport that will require cooperation between the state government, federal government, county, and city government. So we've been facilitating meetings between members of council and the county commissioners and staff as well. On the second major issue that we've been working on is the levy certification and whatever ramifications come as a result of that. We have a better, the city and the Williamsport Municipal Water and Sanitary Authority have a better indication of what the total cost will be for the levy as a result of the findings in the AMIC report. And it looks like that number is below $10 million and significantly lower than what some people anticipated, but still a pretty large nut to crack. We've been working between the city and the authority to make a determination as to whether part of responding to that issue would involve transfer of stormwater responsibilities from the city to the sanitary authority, as a number of other municipalities have done. So in addition to reaching out to those municipalities and providing information to the city, we've also been working in conjunction with the authority. Of course, we're carefully monitoring the R cap situation in Harrisburg. There has been a budget. We've had several site visits from members of the administration, including Secretary Daven, who has visited here, and about half a dozen of his key staff people. There remains a very strong interest in a collaboration between the city and the Commonwealth on that grant application. So we are told that those announcements are pending very soon. We were meeting today with D C E D under Secretary Rick Velelo, and he unfortunately didn't have any specific dates for us, but just that things are moving forward and we've certainly been on the map in Harrisburg with regard to our application. We also met today with the new director of the CRIS program. Governor Wolf recently signed legislation which would allow the city of Williamsport to apply for a CRIS designation. That's the positive thing. The thing that we've got to obviously overcome is the fact that with signing this legislation, the number of potential CRIS communities has went from 11 to 380. So the process by which to obtain this designation has gotten more competitive, but we now, along with the city of Scranton and others, qualify for that. There are only two other CRIS-designated cities in the Commonwealth, City of Lancaster and the City of Bethlehem. The City of Allentown actually had a particular piece of legislation that applies only to them called the NIZ. And that is pretty much just the CRIS on steroids. So they have had a great deal of success there. Lancaster has had success, but really Bethlehem is the city that we determined, for our meetings and Councilwoman Katz was in attendance, as was former county planning director Jerry Walz, to be, I believe, the first municipality to be briefed on the new regulations, which is obviously a positive thing. And then on behalf of businesses in the city who have requested contact with the state government, we also view that as per our directive from the mayor and city council to be part of our responsibility as well. We've arranged meetings between the governor's office and Lycoming Engines for a number of their projects that they're working on, also the Williamsport School District and the pajama factory. So there have been various, and they've all been, of course, we've been trying to keep you updated on those visits in our weekly report. So that pretty much concludes the top things that we're working on. If you have any questions, Phil would be happy to answer them.
Any comments or questions from members of council? For Phil. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Noviello?
If you would, would you explain, for those watching on television, would you give them the definition of the acronym CRIS?
Sure, and tell you a little bit about the program. It's the Community Innovation Zones, I believe, Community Redevelopment and Innovation Zones.
Revitalization and Investment Zone.
Yes, I told you Phil would be answering these.
Something like that.
So basically what it is, basically what it is, Councilwoman?
City Revitalization and Improvement Zones.
And Improvement Zones. So essentially, I don't know the name, but we can describe the program a little bit. And if I'm wrong, you correct me on this, okay? But so essentially what this program is, is it's a total refund on a portion of taxes that are paid. So very similar to, you've heard a lot about Keystone Opportunity Zones. Essentially what it is, if you have a development and there is a substantial increase in the value of that development, any additional taxes that are generated as a result of that are returned back to the city through an authority to invest in economic development in that zone. The zones, one of the nice changes, in addition to the fact that Williamsport would now potentially be allowed to compete for this designation, is the fact that those zones do not have to be continuous. So in other words, you can, if, for example, the administration and council would want to have one development in the eastern part of the city and another development in the western part of the city, you can take those two areas, even though they're not continuous, and make those CRIS zones. Another thing is, it's a 30-year program. So at any point during that 30 years, so long as you do not exceed the acreage, which is 140 acres in total space, you can move those zones throughout the city with Commonwealth approval. So essentially, it's a program that's, it's a complicated program. It's been very successful where it's been used. But it's between the Department of Community and Economic Development, which will be setting the standards and will be the primary agency that makes a determination with regards to awards. And then it will also be the Department of Revenue, obviously, because we have to have an idea of what businesses in that area have paid in, so that we know what needs to be paid back. And then it also involves PennDOT and some of the other agencies as well. But there are, it's a competitive program. They'll accept two municipalities as CRIS municipalities every year, which was the standard before. And communities that have strong partnerships, regional partnerships, transportation infrastructure, a proven track record of spending R cap dollars in an efficient and effective way, which we do, would be extremely competitive for a program like this.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, then, I'm going to jump down and ask Mr. Girardi if he'd like, if he has people here for the demolitions?
Yes, I do.
And also for their certificates?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do those to save our guests a little bit of their evening. And so we'll jump down to number 13, demolition related to 639 Green Street.
Good evening, President Williamson and members of council. What you have before you is a demolition request at 639 Green Street for Sesquoina Health. This structure is located in an I institutional zoning district. Structure was used as a single-family dwelling and is currently vacant. Grass will be planted within, if a permit's not issued, within three months for development. And we do have a representative here from Sesquoina Health, if you have any questions of him or myself.
Good, thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve this application for demolition?
Go move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that demolition is approved. Next item is demolition for 800 Washington Boulevard?
Yes, we have a request for a demolition of a property located at 800 Washington Boulevard. It's located in a CC commercial zoning district. The structure was used, first floor was a commercial space, and the second floor was an apartment. It is currently vacant, and grass will need to be planted in the course of a permit's not issued within three months. I did attach a form, which is the 2010 demolition permit application, which explains to you what he's requesting to do and why he's doing it. His intent is to put up a new commercial facility at that particular lot. And we do have a representative here, if you have questions of him or myself.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve this demolition?
Go move.
Second.
Comments or questions from members of council? Mrs. Katz?
Who is the person?
John.
Hi there. You're going to build, rebuild, I take it?
Could you go up front and give us your name and affiliation for the record, please?
My name is John, John Shahi, and I'm one of the owners.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
John, you're going to be rebuilding this. The commercial business that was in there, have they moved out for good or are they planning on coming back? What is the situation? Because it was a very viable business that was in there.
It wasn't. She has moved out permanently.
She moved out?
Yes.
And she's not coming back?
No.
Okay, I was just curious.
Sure.
Curiosity.
Sure.
Thank you.
Other comments, Mr. Noviello?
Do you have a timeline for getting started and maybe an end date or something like that?
Yes, we have Michael Rample and Dan Vassella working on the land development for the new retail space that we're going to be constructing there as soon as possible. We have a potential national tenant that might be leasing from us.
Are you prepared to give us the name of the national?
Not at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Understandable. And Mrs. Katz?
Is it going to be on the same size building, on the same size lot?
It could be a freestanding building, about 2,500 square feet with a drive-through, or it could be a 4,000 square feet retail. So we're not sure which direction we're going to be going, depending on the tenant.
It's a great corner.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Sounds encouraging.
Absolutely. Just a couple extra comments that are within context, or maybe a question I haven't said yet, within the context of many of the things that council often talks about with demolitions. I don't know how long you've owned this building?
We've owned this about, I would say about a year, a little bit over a year, but we own Jefferson Square next door. We own the Valvoline Express, and we own the Blue Lion Car Wash, which used to be the former Mazda Car Wash.
Sure.
So we have, we want to make sure that corner looks nice, and it's going to be a nice shopping center or retail shop.
And on the one hand, I've come around the corner there, and that's a beautiful building in some respects, and it's a shame to lose it. And we've often talked about the architecture and losing some of the architecture. But oftentimes, what we faced is a building that's been neglected and not taken care of, and nobody's tried to do anything with it for quite some time. And I think we all know that there have been a number of people that have attempted over the years to make a real go within that structure and its commercial space on the first floor, and seen those companies come and go. So there's been a real attempt to make that structure fit the modern economy as successful as we could, as they all tried to be, and some of them look like very interesting, had good potential behind them. So in this case, it's clearly not a matter of neglect, it's clearly not a matter of vision of trying to do something there. But sometimes structures have exceeded their usefulness despite your best efforts and despite previous owner's best efforts. And so I think this is one of those demolitions where it makes sense, given people have tried their best to maintain an asset and make use of it within the changing context of our times. So even though you didn't own it for that whole time period, I wanted to recognize that as a positive reason, given the things that we've often said about past, about people neglecting other properties, that then they come in and say, oh, there's nothing we can do with it now. So hearing no other, oh, Mr. Allison?
The other good thing that occurred to me is that we're seeing some redevelopment and new development on the Washington Boulevard corridor, which is kind of in keeping with our East Third Street gateway, we were looking at the northern part there as well. So those things are beginning to happen, have been happening, so you're a part of that, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Hearing no other comments, Mrs. Frank, on the demolition?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that demolition is also approved. Next item is certificate appropriateness for 201 West Fourth Street?
Yes, what you have before you are actually two requests for the same property. They were brought in front of the planning commission two different times, so we'll take them individually. You did do an approval for this property, first go-around, was for the color scheme and the look of the building. This request, the first one will be to erect two wall-mounted, non-illuminated signs. I have drawings attached to it. One sign is going to be located on the front of the building, facing West Fourth Street, and the other one is at the rear of the property, facing actually West Third Street, but it's backed by Williams Street. I have attached a picture of what the signs will look like, and this was brought before planning commission on Monday, July 11th, and was recommended for approval. And we do have representatives here for this particular property.
Thank you. Motion, a second, to approve the certificate of appropriateness?
Go move.
Second.
Hearing motion, a second. Comments or questions? And we're on the first one, which is the lettering, just to be clear. Mrs. Mealy?
Actually, just to comment that the building really looks quite lovely so far. I'm very excited to see the interior as well. I think the renovation thus far has been quite a success.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Next item is the second one, certificate appropriateness for 201 West Fourth Street. Anything further to add, Mr. Girardi?
Just that there's the two requests that you're, that we're asking for here. One is for the planners, that would be the street planners, that would be located along Williams Street. The planning commission had questions the first time around concerning handicap access and so forth. It will meet all the handicap requirements. You have plenty of room to get around the planners, okay? Also, the other one was for a corner sign, which is not a sign that's made by a manufacturer, it is built on-site. It'll be back illuminated from the back. You have a picture of what it's going to look like, it's FCFP, which is the abbreviations for the property itself. And again, I have brought drawings showing the planner location, showing where the sign is located, and we do have the architect here, if you have any questions of him or myself.
Okay, can I have a motion, a second, on the second 201 West Fourth Street certificate?
Go move, second.
Hearing motion, a second. Comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Just, so that corner sign will be illuminated, correct?
Yes, it'll be back illuminated.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the planters?
Yes.
What exactly am I looking at here? Do you know?
I'd rather have the architect come up. Basically, what you have, you have a planner that will have a display that'll show artwork and so forth, I believe that's what.
Could you give your name and affiliation for the record, please?
Good evening, my name is Benedict Dubbs. I'm with Murray Associates Architects, the architect for the project. The planters are made of steel, so there is a small planting box, if you will, in the center of each of them. There's then a vertical steel plate with an angled top that will display art. So there'll be an opportunity for either three or six artists to display art along with this three-dimensional sculpture that also has planting and also has art on it. So the idea was to make this be a very elegant pedestrian access as you walk down Williams Street, look at, you know, the building's been renovated. Thank you very much for the compliment. We think it's, we're pretty proud of the transformation thus far. And we think that this, again, brings one more level of integration of some of the other things that the city is doing with doing the new walk strips and the edging, this just reinforces that activity and more pedestrian activity, you know?
Okay, so it's steel, and the planters are made of?
Powder-coated steel, and then the canvas that I'm calling it that steel plate, that's going to be galvanized, ready for an artist to put their art on it.
Okay.
Those vertical plates will be taken off and given to an artist. They'll put their art on it, and it'll come back and it'll get mounted back on to the planter.
So they'll attach the art to the galvanized, or they'll paint on the galvanized? Or as they will?
The term is, the artist's art.
Idea. So this is along the lines, I'm trying to think, when I was in Ithaca, maybe eight or nine months ago, some group had gone around and painted all of the Transformers on street corners. Some of them were painted up as buildings, some of them were painted up as, like, you know, plants, plethora of tropical plants. But it's something like that, more or less. Individual art installations, the nature of it depended entirely on the artist. And we're looking at six opportunities, three planters, each with two possible spaces.
Correct, and it could be one artist per planter, it could be two artists per planter, based on the way they're commissioned.
Yeah, presumably, right. So the foundation then will be commissioning those at some point in future when, right. Okay, excellent, thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation.
I'm glad you clarified that, because at first I was picturing, you know, not that this would be bad at all, but just in something entirely different, where like my kid would tape their painting on it on First Fridays as a temporary thing. Could you also, I was trying to make sure I understood the corner sign a little bit better. What's the primary material on the FCFP corner sign?
The structure is steel.
Okay.
And then there's round discs that are circular, pipe that are bracketed off of it. Then there's an acrylic color, the FCFP logo, and then there's a pinned letter on top of that yet, so when it's backlit, you'll see the FCFP in the color, which mimics their logo.
So the circles that hold the lens, the colored lens, are metal?
Are black, correct.
The steel is metal, all of it, all of it is black except for what I'm calling the lenses?
Correct, yes. If you think of two sets of eyeglasses playing sideways that are backlit.
Okay, just trying to better understand it. Mrs. Katz?
Back to the planters.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they really this, seeing the person, the people that are standing there, they're that tall?
Yeah.
Okay.
You should have had one of the people attached with their set.
I know, but I'm looking on. Okay, and what you're saying is that the top of the, this right in front there, that slides out?
This is about 42 inches high off the ground, and they sit elevated so that they don't sit down on the ground from a snowbore view, just needs you to maintain them.
So just for the microphone, let me clarify that.
Here.
The vertical piece is where the art will reside, and the angled piece is where the description of the art will reside. Okay.
Really a cool idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on the certificate, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Next item on the agenda, then, is a certificate appropriateness related to 33 East Third Street, which is no longer a name, I suppose. Mr. Girardi?
Yes, you have two requests on this certificate. The first one is, oh, actually, I'm sorry, three, requests to erect two signs. One sign is a channel letter sign, it's 96 inches by 122 inches, and the other is an internally illuminated sign, which is 14 inches by 157 inches. And I have, the first seat you see come back, it's the name of the restaurant, it is called The Fat Cat, and down it says Grill and Night Venue. Those are the two signs they're requesting. And the other one is, they're requesting to paint the building, if you have the last picture, a white. It was originally a yellow color. It was anodized aluminum panels, okay? The gentleman did paint the building, they were unaware of the certificate of appropriateness request. I went down and talked to him, but at that time, as you can see in the picture, it was about done being painted. They didn't do anything purposely, it's just they did not know the regulations. And we do have representation for both the sign and the color of the building.
Can I have a motion, a second, on the certificate?
Go move.
Second.
Hearing motion, a second. Comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
The representative for this?
Mr. Salvatore. Do you guys want?
Sign or letter?
The sign.
Sign.
The sign.
As you've heard, could I have your name and affiliation for the record, please?
Good evening, I'm Bill Miller with 21st Century Signs.
Could you please tell me what was, what happened to the moose sign? Was that given back or preserved?
The moose is permanently embossed into the building.
It was permanently embossed, okay. So that had to be really dug out, then?
We're basically mounting a pan over top of the moose and painting it the same color of the building, and then mounting the letters to the pan.
Okay, and the fat cat that's there is just a rendering, it's not lit or anything, did you say?
It will be backlit.
It will be backlit?
The white that you see on the outside border will light, and that's the only thing that will light on that portion.
Okay, it's not neon, it's just?
It's internally lettered, which means lighting the inside of the actual panel, or actual lettering itself.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
I walked past this maybe a week or so ago and noticed that I think the white paint at that point was underway. I actually thought it was primer, but we, so it goes. The entirety of the building will now be white, then? I didn't actually check.
No, it's actually, if I'm correct, I'm speaking for them. I believe what you're seeing is what has been painted is the only thing that's being painted. They're going to leave the yellow around the side and the brick down the other side the same color. It's just the front where the metal panel used to be. So the front of the building turns a corner a little bit and it stops.
And do we have requirements in terms of finish for something like that?[1734.51] And do we have requirements in terms of finish for something like that, in terms of, I know that there's a drive-it facade on the one side, obviously I can picture the break where it turns the corner there, I don't have a good picture of the break on the other side of the facade, that is to say, I mean, absent an image from the side of the building, I'm having a bit of trouble understanding where the white stops and the tan begins, and exactly how that looks in terms of us properly representing the, you know, our interests with downtown making a conversation.
What you have is a long part of the front is white, and as you turn the corner, the metal pan, and I'm gonna guesstimate probably goes ten feet down each side, and then it stops and terminates. All that will be wiped.
Okay, got it.
Then the other side's gonna remain the drive-it, which is, I believe, an off-yellow base, and the other side's gonna remain the yellow brick that you see the whole way down.
Okay, and is that the brick color, or is that a paint color, sorry?
No, that's the brick color.
That's the brick color, got it.
Yep, it's a yellow brick.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like, I know there's a house near mine right now that has pretty much just, the front facade is painted and then you round the corner and there's no difference, but all of a sudden the paint stops, so I wanted to make sure we weren't going there, but, okay, that's everything.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Novella.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for Zero West Willow Street.
Is that the one, or is it Two Thirty West Third?
I'm going by the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they were in different order in my packet, but we'll go by the agenda.
Uh, yes, it is actually Zero West Willow Street, it's the parking lot, typically if there's not a structure on the parcel, they don't give you an address, it's on our geosystem. It's actually behind the building that we just approved for the corner lettering, and their request is to erect a mural on the face of the garage structure facing Trade and Transit Two along William Street. The mural will be a painted canvas type, and the mural depicts wildlife, Pennsylvania, both past and present, with Mark Twain being the central figure. This was brought before council, a presentation by Mr. Nichols on ten twenty-three fourteen, when Trade and Transit was first going through all its approval process, there is a presentation made by Mr. Nichols showing everything that was going on with this particular project, murals, the medallions, and the sidewalk and so forth. What happened along the way is we had approval several times for different things on this particular project, this just didn't go through the formal approval process, so I talked to Mr. Nichols and I thought it was best if we went through that process. I know he had some conversation with city council, we wanted to have this up prior to the grand opening of Trade and Transit Two, it did get approval through the planning commission that Monday, and then I allowed them to start erecting it that day so that they could have it ready for Trade and Transit Two. So if you have any questions of me, I'm here, if not, Mr. Nichols is more than happy to come up and speak.
Can I have a motion in a second to approve the certificate of appropriateness?
Second.
Hearing motion in a second, comments or questions? Seems like a shame not to have Mr. Nichols go up and speak. And, and I know that I had part of that conversation, and the idea was that all of the package as a whole, through all of our various, and we don't have a John Grado count of our various resolutions related to this, but at least in concept, the murals and the other things here were all approved, but not the specific mural, and so to make sure that we jumped through the same hoops, we felt like that this needed to go ahead and go back through us in a more specific kind of way, for specifically their certificate. If there are no comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the certificate.
Actually, John, can I ask a question?
Ms. Mealy?
Out of curiosity, though, we did not, we also did not approve any of the mural elements of the building, correct? Mr. Nichols, we didn't, we didn't see a contract for those either, correct?
You approved, you did approve the mural that is down there on the parking lot, down close to Franco's, that mural that was put up by Ms. Mealy, remember she painted that one?
Yeah, yeah.
Bill Milli's, that came through approval process.
Right, right, oh, no, I'm not.
The other murals, I'm not sure if they did or not.
And I don't, I mean, I'm not going all the way back to the one on the side of the bullfrog.
Right.
I'd like to assume somebody approved that, but frankly, that was well before my time.
Same here, yeah.
And I don't know, but I guess I meant, is there a reason why this specific one comes before us, but the other ones that were involved in the Trade and Transit project didn't? The Four Seasons mural, the...
Isn't this, this?
We did Four Seasons.
Oh, was this Four Seasons as well? I thought it was just the, no, that's not the Four Seasons.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, there was a certificate of appropriateness for the building and the design, everything on it.
Okay, the Four Seasons, I didn't remember, I remember the germination piece being in there, but I didn't remember the Four Seasons piece being in there.
No, there was a specific, part of the land development process, we got a certificate of appropriateness for everything on the building itself.
Okay.
We did add the sign later, which we came back on the digital sign, that was not part of the building certificate of appropriateness, but...
And then just out of curiosity, just 'cause I'm, these are the only projects that we see in the city that sort of have an art element to it, where do the contracts for the artwork fall in terms of, I know we let the bids out for the primes, but do the primes include the contracts for the art, or?
No, under the general contract, went through a company that did those screens on the building.
Okay, and so they contract directly with the artist then? Were not involved with that?
No, the artist part of it was contract, was commissioned through the architectural firm.
Okay, so that's part of our, the architectural prime, effectively?
Right.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out, 'cause that, I mean, I knew obviously we did the electrical, we did, you know, we see all of those go through, but small pieces of it like this, I wasn't quite sure where, what, what portion of that, that came from, you know, and sort of how we were.
No, the, the painting, which was, is in the building, was, I think you probably saw it, it was a small, and the major part of it was digitizing and then blowing it up, and the company that actually applied it to the screen that was on the building, so that was not a, so in other words, the murals that are on the building were not painted.
Right.
They were, it was through an electronic digitization, I can't even say the word.
Well, they were in some way or another.
Same thing we do with Church Street.
Yeah, Church Street came through, when it came through the land development, we also did a certificate of appropriateness, on that we show all the elevations, that portrait that's on that side was shown on that certificate of appropriateness, just like this one when I went through, they were all shown on the elevations, and if you recall?
Right.
The portico had to come back through to you, we did some renovations to the front of it that you guys wanted to change, we came back through for that, and there was one other thing I can't remember off the top of my head that we came back through for.
Okay.
This mural was one of the ones that you saw, but technically it really wasn't approved in the format that it should have been, that's the reason why we're coming back through that.
Right, 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 but I guess I'm not, I mean, I understand obviously that none of, that none of these murals were painted on the walls, but they also weren't digital products, they were created by local artists?
Yes.
And they were created as, I'm assuming, in some way or another as paintings, as artwork prior to being digitized, correct?
Some of the, right, so on Church Street it was a small painting.
Yeah, I know how Church Street was created, 'cause I saw that one in action, but these, I, you know, I also visited the artist's studio and saw these ones being produced, so they were...
Yeah, it was the same company that digitized the painting, blew it up and applied to the screen.
Right, understood, got it, and germination, obviously, was funded by the Arts Alliance.
Right.
But the rest of these all came out of grant funding, et cetera, redevelopment account, right, that were part of the Trade and Transit, and some portion of that was also the chief, Wala Palani, some of that was also done through?
Some of it, but that was primarily, two gentlemen professors from Penn College restored that, volunteered to do that.
That's excellent, and very noble of them, and the germination piece, I think, looks beautiful on site, it really looks lovely, just trying to sort of understand the process here, because I knew, we certainly didn't see specific contracts for a lot of that artwork, and I wanted to see where it was coming from in the budget, so.
Well, a lot of it was donated, which we certainly appreciate, to the community, the Arts Alliance, Penn College, Jim Webb, the two professors.
Which one was Penn College's contribution, I'm sorry?
Well, it was actually the two gentlemen from Penn College that restored Chief Wala Palani.
Got it, so germination and some portions of the Wala Palani work were donated.
Yeah, germination, I'm not familiar with, you know, exactly, that, I don't know, it was Roger, Roger Shipley was commissioned, I guess, to do that, and there's a lot of bricks there that list the donors towards that, so, but I'm not sure of the process that put that all together.
Well, it was a, it certainly looks nice, so, that's excellent, thank you.
Other comments, Ms. Novella?
Just, I'm gonna back up a tiny bit here, with respect to some of these certificates coming after the fact, we've had a number of them, it seems, over a period of time here, and I don't know that there's a particular fault involved, but maybe if you could give us a quick rundown on the protocol, I'm thinking specifically, if we look at the thirty-three East building being painted before the certificate is taken done, it seems to me that Danko's been around for some time and done quite a bit of work in the city, wouldn't they know that they had to go through certain processes before they can begin work?
Yes.
And is there, is, when you get notification that something like that is about to begin, do we send out any kind of an information packet that would bring them up to speed about, you can't do this before an appropriate certificate?
Typically, when they come in to apply for a permit, we will notify them of that if they're doing anything with the exterior of the facility, okay, we try to notify them of that, we do try to catch them ahead of time, something like this, within a day that was painted, that's how fast it happens, I mean, it didn't take them long to paint that building, and yes, I agree, the owner of the facility is well aware of the certificate of appropriateness request, the tenant was not.
Okay.
The owner should have, the owner should have gave that information to the tenant, which he did not.
That answers my question, thank you.
And, and we had, we instituted a policy a year or two ago, I believe, on paying the permit fees?
Correct.
In this case, they would have paid an inflated permit fee?
Correct, basically what happens is if we, if we, instead of citing the individual, having gone through the court system for the citation, which takes a lot of time, brought in front of council for the review process, basically if you're doing something, we find you working without a permit, then we'll stop the work, you come in and apply for the permit, and then you'll pay double for whatever that fee is, so if your fee's a hundred and fifty dollars, you'd be paying three hundred dollars.
Should be.
And, and they did in this case, and, and from hearing you talk about it over the, that time period where we've had that in place, not knowing is not an adequate.
Correct.
Excuse, so...
And council still has that ability to turn around and say, they don't like that, they want you to change it, and they're gonna have to repaint it, so you do have that ability to do that, if something's not fitting in with what we want in downtown Williamsburg, you have that option as council to say, no, we don't care if you already painted it, you're gonna repaint it.
And that, not painting specifically, but that authority has only been used in one, once in my memory, for a downtown certificate of appropriateness, but once, probably got some people's attention, which meant we've never had to do it again since then, which is how these things should work. Other comments or questions, again, on Thirty-Third East?
Well, this isn't Thirty-Third East anymore, it's Zero West Willow, but I have, I have a question actually related, related to Danko Holdings, only because we were just, we just brought it up, and the, and the whole, they, perhaps they should have known better sort of context to this, have we seen any movement on stabilizing that structure that Danko owns on the corner of Fourth and Elm?
Not at this point, I have to, I have to send him out a letter requiring him to get something done within a certain period.
They are accruing debt to the city for a property that's in that condition in the meantime, correct?
What's that, I'm sorry?
I'm, just trying to understand, if they leave a property in that condition in a way that is frankly not really necessarily safe for the public, are they accruing a debt to the city, I mean, are they, are they paying a fine for?
Not at this point, not at this point, now, what I'll do at this point now, it's been almost two years, I'm thinking, somewhere around that, okay, and at this point, we tried to settle it, they brought me a letter in saying they had an engineer working on it, they're gonna give me an answer, I've never gotten that answer, so at this point, my job is to say, okay, I'm giving you thirty days to come up with your solution to this problem, and then X amount of days after that to take care of the problem, if they don't, then we can issue citations for each one of those ones he does not fulfill.
Okay.
Yep.
And what would the approximate?
I'm gonna say probably he should have everything completed and done by winter, by the end of summer, I don't want it to go through winter and hold another three or four months, 'cause you can't do exterior work on that.
Right.
So I should have a response, I would say by next city council, I can give you my letter that I send out to him and let you know what the response is.
And are the financial sanctions in keeping with the scope of neglect, or are the financial sanctions limited by what's in our ordinance?
I guess you're requesting, are you asking what they would be?
Yeah, I guess I'm asking, if that, if that, if that building sits through the winter, what does the city receive in trade for having an eyesore there for the city?
The only thing we would do is we would get the fine money for that citation, and if they can issue anywhere up to a thousand dollars for each violation that exists, so we got exterior surface, we have parking lot areas not done, we have a grass area that's not done, window trim that's not done, there's probably seven, eight violations in my book that would do that, so it would be seven or eight separate violations, each one of them consisting of a maximum fine of a thousand dollars.
Okay, it would certainly be my recommendation, given how much I think the impression of our city amongst its visitors has suffered in the time that that building's been standing there, that we, that we seek the maximum penalty, if that becomes necessary.
I, I agree, I concur with you on that, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Novella.
Just now, do we know if there's any, I don't wanna say external, for lack of a more accurate term, external litigation going on there, not necessarily involving the city, but might that be the whole up and what we're talking about?
There is one between the owner of the property and the contractor who demolished, who demolished the structure, and that's what's holding me up here a little bit, I have to talk to Mr. Lubin to find out, or Mr. Smith to find out, how do I proceed with this, because if there's litigation going on, a lot of times I can't force the envelope because there is litigation going on.
Well, that was my concern, we're talking about potential fines to the maximum, we wanna make sure that they're fair and equitable and, and, you know...
Well, when we originally sent this letter, I think you, I think it was eight, nine months ago when I first sent my original letter out, I think the engineer at this point should have been able to determine whether the building is structurally sound or not.
Right.
My opinion is longer the building stands, the longer it looks structurally sound to me.
Right, and, right.
That's just my opinion, right.
And the more quickly the building is stabilized, the longer it remains structurally sound for future generations.
And if I can add one more thing to that, there was a inquiry about handicap issues with that particular building, I did meet with the handicap inspector, along with two of the owners of the property, we walked through, and they will be providing a handicap accessible lift from the lower level to the upper level, so they have bathroom accessibility, so no additional handicap parking needs to be done, so that issue would be solved, the only thing I have left over there is the actual look of that building.
Okay, I think as long as we're talking about the actual look of that building, well, it's been coming and going, but, but the exterior of the property in terms of landscape, et cetera, et cetera, also is not being particularly maintained, couple of months and it won't matter all that much, but it's, it's something else to bear in mind.
Further comments or questions on Zero West Willow Street? Mr. Smith?
Joe, going back on this situation, as I recall, numerous months ago, maybe it was a year ago, there were two engineering firms that looked at that building, and one said it was able to be rehabilitated, and the other one said no, what was the final decision, or is that part of the litigation?
That's part of the litigation.
How much money is going to be returned to the owner, which will influence his decision on whether it can be rehabilitated, or he's gonna demolish the building?
Correct, and, and that's what I need, I need a response back, and what happened was the insurance company for the demolition contractor said the building is structurally sound, and the owner of the building and his engineer said, no, it's not structurally sound, so that's where the...
So I guess that's gonna be left for a lot of the court to decide on, correct?
Correct, but again, no, they do have a responsibility to at least, how do I want to stabilize the exterior of the building, 'cause the longer it stays that way, the more damage will be done, because there's no lintel across the bottom to hold the brick, so the brick's slowly gonna keep falling off, so we gotta do something to at least stabilize what's there.
Wait, you may not know this, but has that been scheduled as a court case?
I don't know that, sir, I don't know that, but again, that's something I would like to find out, so that next council meeting you would have the answers to those questions.
Yeah, because it seems as though we got two diverse opinions here, and that's where the issue seems to lie.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, and, let me just add one thing real quick, please let us know if you believe to get parties to provide you answers, we need to ask them to come to a council committee meeting, for example, Historic Preservations, if that's useful to you.
Sure.
Let us know.
Okay.
Mr. Allison.
Okay, then, just to be clear, then there's two separate issues, the one being the laundry list of things that were originally supposed to have been done by now, and, and the other issue is the stabilization of the building regardless of any litigation, so the thirty-day notice you sent out, does that address everything, or does that just address the stabilization? address the stabilization issue?
No. The notice that will be sent, you'll get...
Oh, you haven't sent it?
I sent out a notice originally letting him know we had to do, because of the certificate appropriateness, we needed to have something done with the exterior of the building. At that point, I met with the attorney, attorney came in with a letter from the engineer basically saying that they're investigating it, because they believe the building is not stable, structurally stable. So I've been waiting for that response back, and I haven't gotten anything. So I'm gonna have to follow back up again with another letter, letting him know, these are the things I need taken care of, these are the answers I need by this particular date. So I know how you're going to proceed, and I can give this information to council. But it will address all the issues. It'll address the parking lot, it'll address the grass area, it'll address the actual surface of the building, what they're gonna do to stabilize it.
Okay. But they, they have to stabilize it?
Yes.
Regardless of...
No matter what happens at this point, they should stabilize it, so nothing else further happens to that side of the building.
Further comments on Zero Willow Street?
That's what I wanna say. Mr. Nichols, you did a beautiful job with the building. It was absolutely incredible, and I wanna thank you very much.
Way to change the subject, Bonnie.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any further comments on Zero West Willow Street? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Thank you for sending representation, whoever's responsible for that. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for Two Thirty West Fourth Street.
Yes. This request is for signage. What they're asking is to erect several signs. The first one would be a one-corner identification sign indicating the businesses located in the facility, which is your first sheet back, will be on their front window, which actually faces government on the corner. They'll be applied to the interior of the building, okay, on that glass. The other ones, if you see, there's one, two, three signs, that'll be located along government place. And those signs are made of wrought iron, and they'll be white with black lettering. All the signs that are there present will be removed, these signs will take their place. So you won't have signs on top of signs. And we do have a representative here, if you have any questions of her?
Great, thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve that certificate.
Second.
Very motion and a second. Comments or questions? Ms. Mealy?
Just a real quick question, Joe. I guess for the ease of the owner of the property, every time she gets a new tenant, does she have to come back to us just for putting a new sign that's completely similar to the old sign with the exception of the name on it?
No, I know what you're saying. But what we have done is, the same thing with the color of a building. If I'm painting my building, my building is a gray, and I'm painting it the same gray, or maybe a lighter shade or look, we don't go through the appropriateness. Same thing with window replacements. If the same style, same look window, we don't. If she's gonna be putting up exact same sign, same size, same color and everything, lettering, but it says Joe's Butcher Shop instead of what it is, we won't bring that in front of council.
Okay. Just checking for her.
Good enough. Mr. Novella?
I just wanted to say I'm glad to see this, because I've often told us, everybody here pretty much uses that street.
Right.
And it's always occurred to me that those businesses didn't get enough sort of recognition there somehow or other, and you kinda go by there so quickly, and sometimes you wouldn't even recognize that there's a business in some of those facilities. So I'm glad to see these little outreach kind of signs, because it really does bring some attention to those businesses there, and they've got a right to do as well as they can do. And if this helps them out, then I'm grateful for the opportunity for them, and thanks for the opportunity to do this for these people, so...
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Exactly what I was gonna say, and the only thing I would add is, in addition to having the signage that's beneficial to all the businesses along there, it's nice to see all of those storefronts full.
Yeah.
And the activity that has come to that building over the last few years, it's a really good sign to see. And I know I'm a regular visitor to Wegmans, and therefore that's my cut through. I won't say that it was five times a week, but maybe. And to see the increased activity in recent years is a good thing. If there are no other comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on that certificate.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that certificate is approved. I believe that gets us through the items, Mr. Ardies, that we'd have representatives for.
Yep, that's right.
So we'll go back up to the...
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Up to, let's, I'm sorry? Number twelve, yes, that was where I was looking for. Resolution for real estate reduction. Ms. Frank, short form, please. Sorry, Mrs. Frank, I didn't give you warning?
Real estate reduction. Whereas at the City Council, the City of Williamsport exonerates and approves the changes in 2016 real estate tax for the item below as submitted by the City Treasurer to City Council.
Just give me the from and two totals, please.
Okay. From seventy, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars to forty-four thousand, three hundred dollars for improvement, and from eight twenty-nine thirteen to six forty-one oh two, removed.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve this real estate reduction?
Second.
Very motion and a second. Mr. Grimes, how are you this evening?
Wonderful, how are you?
Good.
This is an improvement that was removed from the property at ten twelve Elizabeth Street, and that was approved at the very, or removed at the very beginning of the year. So we need to adjust the city tax bill for the full twelve months of the year. It changes the property value, the assessed value, from fifty-seven thousand, three hundred to forty-four thousand, three hundred, which reduces the city tax bill at face from eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents to six hundred and forty-one dollars and two cents.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. We'll go back up now to the top of the agenda, to number six, resolution authorizing the City of Williamsport to award a contract. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing the City of Williamsport to award a contract for the purchase of two thirty-five-feet and two forty-feet compressed natural gas low-floor transit vehicles. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport that it awards the contract for the purchase of two thirty-five-feet and two forty-feet compressed natural gas low-floor transit vehicles to Gilling Incorporated in the amount of two million, two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars and one hundred and seventy-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Just to save you some reading there, can I have a motion and a second to approve that resolution?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Nichols, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Nice to be here.
I can't get the paint off my hands. Anyway, this resolution authorizes River Valley Transit to enter into a contract with Gilling Inc. for the purchase for four compressed natural gas transit buses in the amount of two million, two hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. And this will bring our total number of CNG buses purchased by RVT to fourteen. So we're making significant progress to our conversion of our fleet. The project continues to save us a lot of money in terms of fuel consumption and the environment, and continues to benefit many of our fueling partners. Once again, this is also joint procurement with another transit system, and obviously we do this to expedite delivery and get a lower acquisition cost. This time, we're partnering with Lancaster. The Finance Committee did review this earlier this week, so we're asking for your approval.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy from Finance?
Yes, indeed, Finance did approve it, and I believe our only observation was that we really wish that Mr. Nichols could also take care of getting our fire trucks and other vehicles in the city, because it seems as though RVT is doing very well with their buses. So with the exception of that, there's nothing all that unusual. Mr. Nichols did make us aware that he was going to be acquiring a number of new natural gas vehicle, compressed natural gas buses in the course of the next couple of years. These ones, I think you said, Mr. Nichols, will be delivered in twenty, no, end of twenty seventeen? Is the anticipated delivery date correct?
Well, the ten they're on, well, this'll make total ten.
Right.
Two later on this year, actually a month or two, and the other eight would be about a year from now.
So Finance passed it into the full body of council with a positive recommendation. You're here for new buses, let's work on new pumpers.
Exactly. Comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing execution of a subrecipient agreement. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution authorizing the execution of a subrecipient monitoring agreement between the City of Williamsport and Lycan County in conjunction with River Valley Transit's Unified Planning Work Program for FY twenty sixteen dash twenty eighteen. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport that the mayor and city controller be authorized to execute the subrecipient monitoring agreement between the City of Williamsport and the County of Lycan in conjunction with River Valley Transit's Unified Planning Work Program FY twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport that the mayor and city controller be authorized to execute a subcontract with Theodore H. Poser Associates to act.
Thank you. We didn't need Mr. Nichols wording there to say the same thing for the third time. Can I have a motion and a second on a resolution, so he can tell us those same words again?
So moved.
Second.
Kinda use the word standard resolution, is that what?
Standard resolution for unified... Mr. Nichols?
No, this is for our annual planning contracts. Actually, now we're doing it for over a two-year period, to save paperwork, I guess. This is for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and the same contracts we've used over the past several years, except they're now for two years with the county. And this allows the federal planning money to pass through the county to River Valley Transit to provide the necessary planning, reports, and data collection, and whatever the federal government wants us to do. And the federal money and state money does fund ninety percent of the total planning budget. And also, the other, third contract is with Theodore Poser Associates, and once again, designated as a project director. These contracts have already been approved by the Federal Transit Administration, PennDOT, Lycan County, the Watts Coordinating Technical Committees, and these are part of our twenty sixteen budget, and will be part of our twenty seventeen budget once presented. So we're asking for your approval.
Thank you. This went through Finance as well?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Mealy from Finance?
Finance did review this, and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. That is an impressive lot of review that these contracts have undergone. And the only things worthy of note are, Mr. Nichols, I believe you said that the allocation for transit planning has not increased in quite some time. But, on the other hand, we do not need to worry that the county will, for some reason, decide to renegar some portion of our transit planning funding, because that too is dictated as it comes straight down. So it's approximately sixty-two thousand dollars, and it will continue to be sixty-two thousand dollars until some point when Mr. Nichols can finagle us something more. And actually, just one quick question that I didn't ask at Finance, Mr. Nichols. I'm assuming then that Poser Associates is also copacetic with the same amount of funding every year?
Yes, that hasn't changed for years, the same amount. And one of the things we're required to have is a certified statistician, who, there's any report, we have to file a national transit database report. That has a lot to do with our funding, and how we collect information, and it has to be certified by someone that has the right degree or certificate on the wall. And so he primarily, his work is make sure that report does meet all the federal requirements, and then is sent in by the end of October, is what we have to have it in, so...
Works that one?
Great, thank you. Comments or questions, members of council? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novella?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution of the City of Williamsport, Lycan County, and RVT to accept and sign a multimodal grant. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution of the City of Williamsport, Lycan County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, authorizing the general manager of River Valley Transit to accept and sign the DCED multimodal fund grant, and authorizing the appropriate city officials to attest the same. Be it resolved by that River Valley Transit, a subsidiary of the City of Williamsport, Lycan County, does hereby request a multimodal transportation fund grant of one million, nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the multimodal transportation improvements supporting the Connect Williamsport Old City Third Street Gateway redevelopment project. Be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate William E. Nichols, Jr., general manager of River Valley Transit, and other city, appropriate city officials to execute all documents between River Valley Transit and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second on this resolution?
So moved. Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, Mr. Nichols.
Again, this application is for a multimodal transportation grant to support the Old City's Third Street Revitalization Project. As stated in the resolution, we are requesting one million, nine hundred ninety-five thousand dollars in multimodal funds, and is as part of an overall ten million dollar development strategy, which is, we're calling a third component of the Connect Williamsport Downtown Revitalization Project. The strategy also, as noted in the application, identifies Lycan College and the First Community Foundation of Pennsylvania as potential partners, and includes several improvements to the east side of Market Street, primarily on the Third and Fourth Street corridors. Includes improvements such as Pathway and Streetscape, improvements on East Third Street and Market and Basin Street. It's also the same thing on Basin Street from East Third Street to Fourth Street. We're also talking about enhanced traffic patterns, who include two-way traffic on Third Street between Mulberry and Market Streets, and as well as on Basin Street between Third and Fourth Streets. A potential of a portal entrance into Old City located at the intersection of East Third and Mulberry Streets. Very important part of this is Pathway and Streetscape improvements to support Lycan College's master plan, and enhanced riverwalk connections on Basin Street. We're also talking about the concept of the Russell Inn Heritage Park at the corner of Third and Mulberry, and also the Willow Street Green Infrastructure Pathway, which is a pedestrian quarter to connect Lycan College with the Central Business District, and also the recreation of the original Russell Inn, which was the first building in Williamsport at the corner of Third and Mulberry. It served as an inn, a tavern, and city hall. So that was quite an interesting concept. Again, this is a grant that's being submitted to, first of all, the Commonwealth Financing Authority, but also this was presented to the foundation. We are requesting or participating in the foundation's one million dollar, once-in-a-century grant. So we have submitted this project to them, and made a presentation recently about this project. And as identified in the grant application, the foundation requests one million dollars would provide the necessary local match for this multimodal grant. So that's a very important part of this whole project. So with that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy.
Finance did review this, the grant application, and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Mr. Nichols did entirely distract us with a rather interesting video.
Wait.
YouTube video that provided pretty much a three-D tour of the proposed sort of changes to the area, which would be pretty spectacular if we manage to, you know, if some portion of that vision becomes a reality. But the current application, of course, is primarily to support some work by Lycan College, and ideally multiple other investments in this region of town. As council has frequently stated, we would like to see the city, the city in processes in projects like this should work more as a facilitator and work more with Streetscape, perhaps, than with actual structures, or taking on further ownership of property. And this project thus far can, and hopefully will be, an excellent example of it. It is, of course, right, this project, this grant, part of the match would come from a portion of the two-and-a-half million dollar line of credit that we just, that we just took out a couple of weeks, a month ago. And then the other portion of the match potentially would come from the foundation's million-dollar grant. But I'm assuming that, well, obviously, both of these grant processes... When will we hear about this grant, Mr. Nichols? I can't quite recall.
November, beginning of November.
That's pretty fast. Anyway, both of the grant processes are due to sort of come to a head at the same time, so we will. And then, I'm presuming that it, we're still a little ways from a lot of the, the work that will happen under either of these grants because we're still dealing with the traffic study in Old City.
Yeah, the traffic study is essentially complete, except for issuing the report. We've been engaged with discussions with PennDOT on the two-way traffic, and obviously, coordinating with PennDOT as well on, on their, their major renovation or reconstruction project on Third Street from Camma all the way through downtown. So, we just, you know, what we want to do is get all these improvements in place before they come through with their, their project. And also, we want to be timing this with Lycum College's master plan. So, we want to see a lot of activity next year. We, you know, we've been working with the state on, on this grant. I think we're, we're in pretty good shape with getting the grant from the state. And sort of the key to this is if the foundation selects us as a recipient of the once-in-a-century grant. I know there's several other great projects that are competing, but as you mentioned, we had that video, and I'm hoping that puts us over the line. So to speak.
Oh, the video, you just gotta see the video. But anyway, it is, it was a remarkable testament to modern techno, yes, that too. Anyway, Finance did forward the, the potential for Mr. Nichols to apply for close to two million dollars for the city with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council, Mr. Novello?
This is beneficial in a number of ways. Number one, this, this continued step is one more step in the process to bring some things to fruition on the east side of Market Street that we've been talking about for several years. It's also a means of keeping our stakeholders kind of in tow, so to speak. We won't want to drop the ball in this, things have slowed down, those things happen. This is, I think, one means of picking up the pace again and keeping it high on the docket. And I think that's really imperative at this point. I don't want to see this whole thing kind of slow down any more than it already has. And I think this is, again, one of those steps that's necessary and ultimately going to be very fruitful in the long run. And again, it does keep other stakeholders, and particularly, Lycum College comes to mind primarily, but there are others involved as well. But the college has made that one of those first steps forward on our behalf earlier on in this process. And I think it's our responsibility to respond in kind and keep the ball rolling as quickly and beneficially for all as we possibly can. So, this is not too difficult to support, actually.
Thank you, Ms. Novello. Other comments or questions? Mr. Smith?
I think that in progressing with this project, the one thing that we have to be reminded of, that John Grado and I have discussed this, that PennDOT has a drop-dead date in March of next year because they're going to be doing a lot of reconstruction on Third Street. And they have told us through a letter that if those dates are not met, they're going to go ahead and there won't be any changes allowed after that date. So, I think that we have to constantly keep that in the back of our mind, that we do have a drop-dead date. And we're into September right now, and March is rapidly approaching. So, that's one of the things that we do want to keep in mind in, in keeping this project going.
And so is Mr. Grado's retirement date, so that's also, we need to...
If, if, one thing I would add is, as I request to Mr. Grado, to, to at least start another piece of the project, and that's the binder that will include all the resolutions. Because, as Ms. Mealy suggested, and I think Mr. Novello added on, this is a different kind of a role for the city in terms of development. I have a, an idea that what we will see are a ton of resolutions between now and when we see a substantial level of completion, which may be many years down the road, once this entire area is, is fully revitalized. We've had a number of actions that we've taken already and many more to come that probably will extend past his extended, the beginning of his extended vacation, to reframe that for, in his case. And, and so, I think this new model of the role of the city as a catalyst for private investment and private development, we will see some really positive effects. And I think we'll see positive effects over a larger number of parcels, a larger land area than what we've seen when the, the cities played a role in, in past developments. And so, I'm excited to see, one of the maps we have in here more or less extends, well, put a couple of them together, from Penn Street, at least to Market Street, but may also then have impacts in a larger developed area, all the way to Pine Street and beyond, and connecting into some of other projects that are already underway on the western side of our Central Business District. And, and looking at the pictures and, and the videos that were referenced earlier, I think the transformation has the potential for having a fairly considerable positive impact for a large swath of our city along, and extending well beyond, I think, our Central Business District. So, it's, will be interesting to continue to see how the different role for the city as a catalyst, instead of a more direct developing, development partner, will play itself out over the coming years.
I understand that part of Mr. Grado's retirement package will be a 24-hour on-call beeper.
Absolutely.
Just in case we need his services as time goes along in this process.
It's the pick-your-brain beeper. If there are other, no other comments, Mrs. Frank on the resolution.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Novello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution carries on. Thank you, Mr. Nichols, for keeping the project moving forward. Much appreciated. Next item on the agenda then is number nine, resolution authorizing Scope One for City Hall improvements in the police department. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution authorizing work order proposal Scope One and Scope Three between the city of Williamsport and Larson Design Group for the City Hall improvements, police and site investigation for relocation of City Hall. Whereas, City Council has approved a resolution authorizing an open-end contract for engineering and design services with Larson Design Group. And whereas Larson Design Group has prepared a proposal for work related to police department security upgrades, investigating the ability to make various improvements to City Hall and identify the individual sparsial needs of the current City Hall. Now therefore be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the city of Williamsport that the mayor and city controller are authorized to execute the attached proposal between the city of Williamsport and Larson Design Group for services outlined in Scope One and Scope Three in the amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand nine hundred dollars.
Motion and second to approve this resolution.
Motion second.
Hearing again, motion and many seconds, Mr. Grado.
Yes, good evening. This resolution, we're requesting council's authorization to execute a contract between the city and Larson Design for, well, what's indicated on the resolution is Scope One and Three. We had requested a proposal from Larson Design. We have an open-end contract with them for city engineering services, for renovation work at City Hall. These were based on previous reports that were done as part of the HVAC system, the fire alarm system, security. Scope One, however, is the immediate, and it was determined that we want to proceed with the security work to secure the police department. That's a relatively small project, which includes additional partitions in the hallway leading into the police department, from the rear entrance to City Hall. That was all the planned specs, design, and putting it out to bid, and also the general project services for a project that's estimated to be about fifty thousand dollars. So, so that's Task One or Scope One. The second was the major portion, which we're, we've, based on meetings, have decided not to proceed with. And then the third, Scope Three, was a spatial analysis for City Hall to determine what needs each of the departments have, how much space is required. This was basically to give council additional information related to the overall project, since the major improvements identified in reports is in excess of five hundred thousand dollars. So, what we presented to both the Public Works Committee and the Finance Committee was authorization to proceed with Scope One and Three. And there was discussion to, to hold Scope Three, so I guess we'll kind of discuss that now. Everybody's here at the table, so if there's any questions council has on those, what occurred during those two committee meetings, we'll be happy to answer.
Okay. I believe, I, from what I understand, the discussion about Scope Three and removing it occurred at Finance. And so, let's, Mr. Smith, if you could talk about Public Works discussion, especially related to Scope One, we'll then come back to Scope Three after Finance talks about Scope One and, and kind of go through them as two separate stages, if that's okay with you.
Well, actually, the resolution was only for Scope One and Three. Two was not included.
Right, right, I'm sorry. Let's talk about Scope One, and then we'll come for both committees, and then we'll come back and talk about Scope Three for both committees. So, let's go ahead and knock out number one.
Well, we met on Tuesday and reviewed this resolution concerning Scope One and Three of the project. And just as some background information, when Chief Young arrived in April, I think he had been here about three weeks, and he and I took a tour of downstairs in the police facility. And he had immediately taken a look at the facilities and how it was set up. And I don't want to get too much in because obviously, it's a security issue that, certain information we obviously don't want to be made public. Due to the fact that today, many police agencies are having issues with some of the folks that are out there and deciding to go into police departments, we have found that the security here is not what we really should be utilizing. We also had a year ago Homeland Security come in and do a complete security check of the entire building and made recommendations. We now are going to have, if this is approved, Larson Design, work on putting the plans together of how we can secure the police department to a certain extent. We have been discussing, obviously, in the last several months as to whether or not we're going to keep City Hall here. There's some possible advantages of not utilizing this building any longer and going to another building. And I think that's where Scope Three really comes in, to define the square footage that's going to be required, should we decide to move. However, that also comes into play with the possibility, which we're working on, of a new public safety building. So, we've got really three things going here at one time. And obviously, the police department would have to remain in this location, whether we moved City Hall administration offices or until the time that a public service, public safety building could be built, which we know would be several years away. During the process of Chief Young working on and developing this security issue, at our meeting on Tuesday, it was also, I brought up the fact that it had come information to me that the Treasurers Office also had some possible security issues there that should be looked at. And of course, this was not part of this situation. We also found that the Codes Department has certain security issues. Some of those have been taken care of at this point. One of the things that the public is now finding is the outside doors are locked and they cannot come in the way that folks have been used to coming in and going into the Codes Department. They have to come in the front doors, currently are the back doors, and take the elevator down to the, to the lower level. Mr. Grimes brought us up to date on what he feels could be some security issues. One of the other things that we discussed at that time was, in this, security changes, the City Hall has to be accessible by the public. We call it City Hall, and it's a city building, and we have to make certain that whatever changes we make, that the public has proper access to the building. And also, the best parking facilities that we can give to the public. So, there's a lot of things in play here. There was also the discussion on the hours of operation of City Hall. Because when we look at it, we have four different sets of operating hours for this building. And that can be somewhat confusing to the general public. This is going to be looked at in the near future, with a lot of the different departments are going to sit down and go over hours of operation and how that can possibly either be better information given to the public, or certain changes perhaps in the future to make some of the hours more uniform. It seems to go back numerous years that there was rationale at the time as to why those hours were particularly set. In the case of the Codes Department, they open at eight o'clock. A lot of contractors start very early in the morning, so that gave contractors early access to the building. Other departments open at eight-thirty, and I believe there was, we found one at, I believe, nine o'clock. So, those were the things that were brought out. Our final decision was to send this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. We do want to see, after the design work is done, what the bids come in at. If the bids come in under what we anticipate, that will give us some other dollars to perhaps look at some of the things in the Treasurers Office, which we don't feel is going to be a very expensive issue, but they are things that there is a legitimate concern about, as Mr. Grimes had brought to us. So, we did review this, there was a lot of discussion. There's still some issues that we feel that should be addressed after the bids are brought in and we take a look at the bids. But, we do want to go ahead, and I think council, we have discussed this several months now, that no matter what we do with City Hall or a public safety, public services building, we still have to secure the police department up to certain standards. I'm, I'm not going to go into it, obviously, for security reasons, but probably about a year ago, I was in the building and kind of surprised one of the police detectives because I was standing, he had his back to me when I went in a certain area, and he didn't even know I was there. That was not a good situation. So, that started the entire process, even before Chief Young came here, that something really had to be looked at with the security of the police department. So, as I pointed out, we did pass this with a positive recommendation to council, and we also want to look at some other security issues after the bids come in. So, that's part of Scope One that we, we discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Mealy from Finance?
Finance passed Scope One to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. And obviously, the, the work in the police department is much needed, and we've been discussing it for quite some time now. We're glad to see that we're moving forward with it, and we anticipate having it done. I believe, Mr. Grado, it was perhaps January, February, we were hoping everything was going to be completed?
Yeah, we'd be out to bid in October, and we anticipate the completion of the work early in January.
And so, we, we saw no issue whatsoever with moving forward with Scope One, and we were, we were pleased to see it on the agenda this time.
Okay, thank you. In terms of Scope Three, I know that there was some discussion, because as a council-initiated discussion, no decisions yet have been made, on Scope Three, the issue was, the context behind the issue, as council looks at the, the cost of upkeep and maintenance of this as City Hall, and how it meets the needs of various departments, including all of the departments related to public safety, we've initiated discussions with the county about whether better solutions might come out, better both in serving the public, but also in, in terms of costs. As part of that, I, Mr. Smith and his committees for public safety have been exploring the needs and costs associated with police and fire and codes. And Ms. Mealy and her committee through Finance have been discussing the needs and the costs associated with City Hall functions not related to public safety. And I know had discussed with Mr. Nichols, and Mr. Nichols had discussed with Larson Design and Tony Visco, the, the concepts related to Scope Three. And I think some of the discussion that then you can discuss, and, and Mr. Smith from Public Works may have spent some attention, but my guess is less, on that in public safety, whether or not we wanted to make some preliminary decisions before we spent money, even a small, relatively small amount of money, as anticipated in Scope Three. And so, I wanted to divide those two up and then kind of reverse the order by having Finance talk about their discussion on Scope Three. talk about their discussion on Scope Three.
Yes, so, so Finance did, did not recommend that council approve Scope Three at this time. In fact, if we move forward with the discussion, I will be recommending an amendment to the ordinance to remove Scope Three from, the resolution, excuse me, to remove Scope Three. And that was not, obviously, this is work that needs to be done in some fashion. We have a number of questions about space requirements for various administrative functions within the building and about the cost of occupying that space elsewhere in town versus the cost of occupying it here in City Hall, given some ongoing costs we have in a building this, this large and this old. And, and some of the finer points of that investigation into the needs of City Hall are not likely to be perhaps accomplished on a, on a committee level by council or by the administration, only because some of those questions are perhaps better suited for an architect. When we initially opened this discussion within the Finance Committee, the, the sort of end result of it was the presentation of a, of the package from Larson Design outlining three separate scopes. And, and Scope Three being the one perhaps most representative of the information we were looking to obtain, but when we, as a Finance Committee, when we reviewed Scope Three, it turned out not to really contain, in, in some ways to be far more than what we needed as part of the initial investigation, and in other ways not really to be giving us enough information to make the decision, the initial decision that we need to make about whether or not City Hall will continue to fulfill our needs. Consequently, I would like to spend the next week or so opening up a discussion directly with Larson Design and with the architect so that we can make certain that we have a Scope Three that both in cost and in function serves the, serves, answers the question that, that council and the administration needs, needs it to answer. And then we can move forward perhaps with further investigation depending on, on our decision on that, on those results. All of that is to say, Scope Three is great in theory, but in practice, we need, we need to do a little bit more work on it and then it'll come back. And for that reason, we recommend that we pull it from this agenda, but ideally, we'll see it back in two weeks, if not two, then four. Okay?
Thank you very much. And Mr. Smith, I, I know that Scope One was really the focus of, of your committee's attention. Did you have any further discussion related one way or the other to Scope Three?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Because obviously, we looked at that from a, a public works standpoint of view because of the, being a city building. In order for us to determine how much square footage we're going to need if we move out of here, we have to know how much we have now. And what are the needs now? Do the departments have enough space, or maybe some of them feel they have too much space? This will also help Mr. Nichols when he does the budget next year of putting the rental amounts together based on square footage if we want to do it that way. In our discussion, we felt that, well, before we can even think about looking at another building, we have to know how much square footage we need. If we don't do that, then we're going to prolong that stage till we decide to do it to find out what we need. In other words, what I'm trying to say is the next time that we meet with the county folks, one of the things they're going to say is how much square footage do you need? What do you need? What are your requirements? I mean, we can have them give us space that they have available, but we don't know whether that's going to be enough or whether it's double what, what our requirements are. So our basic discussion, and, and as I pointed out, we did pass that with a, a positive recommendation, was to get started someplace. And, and as you, as was pointed out, that's, that's really more effort than what our city folks can handle. You know, we, we have to go out and, and really have a detailed plan put together on, with the different departments and interviewing them and finding out how it's actually set up. In other words, are the office spaces that they're utilizing now, is, is that proper? Doorways between two offices, maybe in the future, that's not such a good idea. Maybe offices that don't have a doorway between them, might be a better idea. So that's why we decided that yes, that was going to be way too much for what we could handle. The other thing that we did, we just basically discussed Scope Number Two, because that was obviously something we were looking at, which we have to think about in the future. And one of the things that Larsons have told us, when we start looking at renovations to City Hall, and, and I want to point out that I, I don't think anyone on council has it in their mind one way or the other, because we have so much to investigate, to really to come to a conclusion that is what's going to be best for the public. And there's a lot of involvement. Should we move to a new building? Well, we've got to look at parking. Again, we have to look at access to the public. That's very important in a City Hall that the city has, our folks have access to the, to the building. When we looked at the Larson Design paperwork, they did do a couple estimates, and it gave us a little bit of understanding of at least two of the projects. One of them is, and I don't want to get too deep into it, but it's converting the existing passenger elevator to a front and rear opening elevator and some other things with the elevator. Their idea, without really doing a complete study of it, is around $200,000, just for that one phase. Then we look at the City Hall interior improvements, the HVAC, which we know the thermostats are in very bad shape. There's some other issues that have to be looked at with the HVAC. And again, these were just preliminary estimates, $225,000. So now, we're up to $425,000. And that did not include the City Hall interior improvements, looking at the electrical system, of how that should be updated. They did not give an estimate on that at all. Some of those things in the electrical was to provide card access on any of the new doors to be installed, modifying the lighting and power in the second floor area, modifying design power and data for the new elevator system. Fire protection, they did not come up with an estimate on that. So we know that the fire alarm system is to the point where parts are either non-existent or it's very difficult, if you don't have the internet, to find them. That's about the only place you can find parts for certain old pieces of equipment. So there are several things to look at, and by no means is this committee making any recommendations whatsoever. We just have to start forming these project opinions and what we're looking at dollar-wise from an estimate standpoint of view before we even get into the, to the really hard numbers. So, and we may wind up at the end, we're going to stay here and put the money into it. Or we may wind up that we're going to move somewhere else because of the costing. And I think that the public should be aware that what we're trying to do is what's the best cost method. And even though we love this old building, you know, it was designed as a post office. And when we did the server room for the spillman system for the police department, there's things that we found in here, catwalks and other type of things that nobody even really thought of. So there's, there's a lot of issues that have to be looked at, and I know people say, well, you know, this is a slow process, but yeah, it is, because we want to get it right. We don't want to just hastily put something together and then find we should have gone in another direction. So that really is a good summation, I think, of what we did, looking at all three parts of it. And the most important part obviously is Scope One, of getting that police department protected to the level that Chief Young feels is going to be adequate at this point in, in the game. So again, we passed it, the entire resolution with a positive recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. And to make sure that I have the recommendations correct, what I've heard from the two committees is the recommendation is Scope One is a no-brainer. Absolutely, we must make sure that the security of, of the police department is enhanced. And we've been unified on that front, and the next step is to approve Scope One. On the issue of Scope Three, I think the council's intent from that combination of discussion is, assuming this would pass review of full council tonight, would be to remove it for now because the approach of council has been to be very deliberate and very conservative in making sure that we take step-by-step processes for making the decisions about the future of City Hall. And the very earliest steps need to be the very lowest cost steps. And the, the, we make low-cost or no-cost decisions about whether to proceed before we make any cost or higher cost decisions that would move us forward to a path that we couldn't kind of recover from. And so, from my conversations with members of Finance Committee on their discussion, it would be my understanding that maybe the next step would be amendment, removing Scope Three from this so that we could make a lower cost set of decisions before we make maybe even a higher cost. If it went in one direction, we might make these expenditures and maybe even more, but if it went in the other direction, we could avoid these expenditures anticipated in Scope Three. So if that's my understanding and my understanding is correct, the next thing I would expect to find is someone to be offering an amendment to remove Scope Three from this resolution.
I'll offer that amendment.
I'm offering that in a second. Do we need to be more specific on the exact language?
I think we probably ought to change the dollar amount.
And the dollar, you're right.
So I'm going to...
From paragraph two, remove, identify the individual space needs of City Hall, remove Scope Three from paragraph three and change the dollar amount to?
Thirteen thousand seven hundred.
Is that adequate instruction for what that amendment is?
Okay, so we, the proposed amendment would be to remove and Scope Three from both the title and paragraph three of the resolution, to strike from the second where, from the second whereas statement, the final phrase, and identify the individual spatial needs of current City Hall, period. And to modify the number at the end of the third paragraph of the resolution from $26,900 to $13,700. Okay.
I've heard a motion. I think I heard a second, but let me hear it again.
Second?
I heard a motion and a second. Can we, do we have comments or questions on that amendment? Mr. Smith?
You know, I understand why you're doing that, but that is going to delay us obviously in working with the county. Is the intent to come back at some other time and give this contract to Larson? Or what, what is the intent? Because we can't move ahead at all with any further discussions with the county.
The intent is to take two weeks and figure out the proper, the proper set scope with Larson Design and have it back before us in two weeks for approval of the...
You're talking about the verbiage is not suitable?
Yeah, we're talking, there are a couple of things that aren't really included in Scope Three.
You want to include some other things?
Well, there, it, to a certain extent, Scope Three was maybe a little too detailed for a first look, sort of inexpensive, just, you know, get, get the large perspective. And then there were a few things that weren't included, such as an analysis of potential relocation space and the cost of that relocation space, and a kind of real broad brushstrokes analysis of the cost of staying in City Hall versus things, things that we will have to do with in the next couple of years versus things that we can successfully postpone if we're, if we're moving out of the building. So, just, just a couple of things, but things I think that need to be clarified before we move ahead with it, so.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that, well, that Larson knows that that might be coming, and really what we're asking them for would be a smaller scope initially, that costs less, then followed up by a bigger scope if the decision is to continue to proceed.
Well, that costs us double the money then?
I think not, because I think the first step would be considerably smaller than 13,000. And then the second one would get us much further than what the scope would, it contemplates now. Would need to happen if we got to that stage anyway.
And furthermore, I think the revision of the, of this proposed Scope Three that's less expensive and less extensive will probably also be completed more quickly, which means that we may in the long run wind up time neutral on, hopefully, but, but we'll see.
Being careful and deliberate here. Other comments or questions on the amendment to the resolution, removing Scope Three? Hearing now Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is amended. Further comments or questions on the now amended resolution, Mr. Noviello?
Well, not only the amendment resolution, do I have to speak on that specifically?
I'm sorry?
Do I have to speak on that specifically?
Not on the amendment.
We're back to the motion on the resolution that is now amended.
Yeah. I just wanted, for the sake of our viewing public again, and to give some respect and some consideration to Chief Young for devoting some of the time that he so preciously needs presently to this cause, helps us and it really has helped put us in a position where we're in where we can begin some of this process. And I've always been a proponent of bringing in the people who will work in the conditions that we're about to change. Sometimes, no offense to engineers and what have you, but they tend to come in and do what they think is best and not necessarily look at the people who are going to be in that environment after the fact. So I think the chief having a firsthand role in this is really very crucial at this point because we're trying to keep things to a minimum. I think he's done that for us very well at this stage of the event, so I want to just thank him for that. Secondly, to go back to Mr. Grimes's concerns, something that we've talked about on this council in the past, and maybe several times, but I'm not so sure we follow through on, and that is updating some of the signage in and around City Hall itself. I think part of what the concerns that Nick has been concerned about might well be addressed at least preliminarily by some updated signage, particularly when it comes to handicap access and some of the things that might relate to security there, to include things like posting office hours by various departments in a place that can be seen generally by people walking in the front door of the building. And those kind of exercises I think are, are low cost, which goes back to our concern, and can in fact serve the purpose at least for the, an interim period. And second, and thirdly, to go back to one of Mr. Smith's comments, we have to remember and to remind the public again that this was designed as a post office building. So the security measures certainly back in the days when this was first put up were not quite the same as they are today, obviously. What that means for us is basically through the entire course of this building being a City Hall, it's been a series of adaptions and adaptations through the course of time. And now we're at, we're at a crossroads, I think, to the extent where we have begun at least a thinking process and a speaking process of maybe relocating wherever's possible. So I wanted the public to kind of get an understanding of where we're at here. This isn't about something to be chosen to do. This is something that's kind of been foisted upon us, and now we're trying to do the best that we can. And I think again, with Chief Young's input, Nick's input, and what we get from Mr. Grado is, is really paramount to what we're going to be doing here. And low cost is always, you know, one of our concerns. So, thank you.
What we actually did was, at that meeting, the issue of the signs were brought up, and we actually asked the administration to look into that signage issue. We didn't have recommendations other than that there were some signs that really need to be placed since obviously the change has been made with the Codes Department and so forth. So we asked, we did ask the administration to look into that, and hopefully we'll see some changes that meet Mr. Grimes's recommendations.
Thank you. Other comments or questions, Mr. Allison?
Very interesting comments, Mr. Noviello. I think there's, there's somewhat of analogy between this building and the old Y. The old Y at one time was functional and met all the needs of recreation and physical activity at that time, but over the years, the needs and demands changed a lot, and they found it was much more economical to find another place, which they built. But because the old building had a lot of empty spaces and unused spaces and a lot of stairwells and things that weren't necessary, and there's a lot of that in, in this building as well, because it was designed for other things. This was the federal courtroom here. This wasn't designed to be a regal place for city council to sit, although it's, it's nice, but it, it wasn't our choice or any council's choice. It was here, so they used it. But I think we're, we're thinking of function, we're thinking of efficiency, and, and how we can best use taxpayer money and provide not just the same services, but we have different services today. services today than city council had when they took over this building, so how we can provide those in a better way that the, the public needs.
Mrs. Katz?
One of the things that I think comes to everybody's attention is that when you're in a working environment, you become accustomed to what you're working with, and not realizing at times how difficult it is until one department starts changing and then everybody starts questioning, how can it be made better? It's like you, Nick, said, how can this be made better? How the Codes Office said, how could this be made better? And I think what this has done is opened everybody's eyes to the fact that there are changes that have to be made in, in so many different ways. The problem is, when you start making changes in one department, then the other departments are affected also. And so, therefore, this is why we're being so hesitant and careful of how we're doing this because of that factor, because we're finding out in, and you find this out in any old building, that you break through one wall and it creates problems for another area. So, I think what we're doing is taking this cautiously, and we're not going to jump at things until we can see exactly where we are. But I really have to, you know, commend everybody in the departments to at least bringing this to the forefront, that we're, we're going to be making intelligent choices here. And I want to thank you all for that.
Other comments or questions, Ms. Mealy?
Just one quick comment, that as a rule, I am a huge proponent of adaptive reuse. However, I, I think that we need to kind of draw a line between the city adaptively reusing a building, which winds up costing, costing the taxpayers more money, and a developer adaptively reusing a building in such, in, in a way that, that fits his or her budget. And that is to say that while I would normally say we should be using an older structure, I don't know that, that if, if it turns out that this building is costing the taxpayers far more money than, than something more modern would, I don't know that we have the, the right to make that decision with money that, that is not ours. And consequently, that is what, what makes us ask, ask the questions that we're asking, and, and we'll see what the resolution is.
Right, and, and I applaud my colleagues here for, for their careful consideration of all these questions, in addition to, as Ms. Katz said, the departments. Because of the age of this building and its condition, and because of the changing needs of providing the services, as, as was discussed, this building needs money invested in it. We're doing really the minimum necessary to make sure that the Police Department's security is addressed here. But we, if, the decision is that City Hall remains City Hall, both for public safety and for non-public safety needs for the near future, there will be money that needs to be invested, and that money will far exceed the half million dollars that we've created in the line of credit, as, as Mr. Smith's accounting attests to. We're talking about at least several million dollars over the next five or 10 years. We're taking this moment in time to say, can we do it better and more cheaply by making a different choice that would require, that would result in, in City Hall no longer, operations no longer being in the city, current City Hall building? And, and the standards, all of my colleagues have, have said in one way or the other tonight are better, do it better, and do it more cheaply. And those are the standards we're going to apply to as we're looking at, what does public safety need and what, that look like in this building and other facilities versus a new facility? The same is true for the, the other City Hall functions. Can we serve the public better and can we do it more cost effectively? If the answer is this building, then we must expect that that will require an investment. If it is somewhere else, we must expect that would require an investment. It's not doing something versus doing nothing. And I, I think that's important for the public to understand. We're not just coming out, oh, new shiny, let's go do something more fun and more interesting. We're saying, money has to be spent. What's the best way to spend that money so that we serve this public at best and most cost effectively? And, and so, I applaud what's been done, and I applaud what will be done to make those very careful decisions moving forward. Any other comments, Mr. Henderson?
I just wanted to mention that we can add on there that the money that we're spend, that we will be spending is not money that we have.
Yes.
So, what, what we're doing is we're trying to protect the, the commitment that our children will be making. They're going to be paying this, so we have to be very careful about that. And that, and that's important, I mean, we're just, we don't have it. We don't have it to spend, so we just have to keep that in mind.
Very good point. Hearing no further comments or questions, Mrs. Frank on the resolution as amended.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution passes. Next item on the agenda then is resolution to approve the 2016 James David Robinson Cultural Arts Grant. For this, I'll be handing the gavel over to Mr. Allison and abstaining.
Item 10, resolution to approve the 2016 David Robinson, James David Robinson Cultural Grants, Arts Grants Program. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution to approve the 2016 James David Robinson Cultural Arts Grant Program. Whereas, the city has designated three thousand dollars of general fund dollars for the James David Robinson Cultural Arts Grant Program, and whereas the James David Robinson Cultural Arts Grant Review Panel has recommended that the following organizations receive the following amount of funding. The Community Arts Center for the Educational Series, one thousand dollars. The Williamsport Symphony Orchestra for the 50th Anniversary Holiday Concert, one thousand dollars. The Repass Band for the Liberty Classic Band Festival, five hundred dollars. The Community Theater League, the Penguin Project, two hundred and fifty dollars. Biltown Blues Association, Fall Into the Blues, two hundred and fifty dollars. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the mayor and city controller are authorized to execute grant agreements with each organization for the amount of funds referenced above.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second.
And a second, thank you. Mr. Sillow and Ms. Sterling are going to address this for us. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening. Janice kind of summed this up. This was reviewed by Finance. Any questions? Well, that was...
Must be getting late, Mr. Sillow was very to the point.
Ms. Sterling, would you have anything to add?
This, these organizations were reviewed also by the Recreation Committee, and that's how we determined which organizations were going to receive the monies.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mealy?
Indeed. Finance did review this, these, this grant disbursement and pass it to the full body of council with positive recommendation. There was, I think, a small change in one of the funding items, which would be the Community Theater League, I believe, got funding this year. But, but as a rule, this is an unfortunately small pool of money for, for the city to put into the arts on an annual basis. But we do try to make it go as far as we can, and clearly, we are. We will be funding five worthwhile projects this year, so that's, it's nice to see that we can, we can at least get that far. And with that, we pass it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation, and it opened up anybody else.
Mr. Noviello?
Being part of the REIT Commission, I sat in on this meeting, and even though, as I understand it, our council rep can be a voting member of the Recreation Commission, I abstained from voting because I wanted this to be fully their responsibility, and we would be voting on it up here, and I didn't want to abstain from that. But I didn't have any trouble with the logic that they put forth with regard to the designations here. I think Joel was there, too. And, you know, I think they, they did the choosing as best as possibly can be done. Certainly, the, anything related to the educational series is, is going to be very important, I think, in many ways. And, you know, the, the city in my mind has always owed a little bit of a debt of gratitude to the Williamsport Symphony Orchestra. They really do promote us in a cultural way, a very entertaining way, they draw in lots of people, and it's just a worthwhile endeavor all the way around. So, difficult not to give them a substantial amount of money, given the low amount of money that we do have to, to extend here. Repass Band, another one of those situations, very historical, certainly falls into our cultural background as well. Nice to give them a little bit of a boost, so I wish we could give them more as well. As the same with the Community Theater League and the Biltown Blues. All these organizations are, are paramount for our city, I think, in ways that maybe some of us don't understand. We don't all partake in all these things, but we do know the value of them. And, and again, I think the decisions that they made were, were pretty supportable, so I followed through within my own things, and I will support that here tonight as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Abstain. Next item on the agenda then is resolution related to GeoPlan Software Upgrade PSA. Mrs. Frank, please.
GeoPlan Software Upgrade PSA Resolution. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport to award a GeoPlan Software Upgrade Contract for the Codes Department in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars to GeoDecisions 207 Senate Avenue, Camp Hill, Pennsylvania. Whereas, GeoDecisions will upgrade the city's existing GeoPlan software to GeoPlan Web. The new software will be hosted using Amazon to Web Services, S3 Standard Storage Cloud Performance, which, platform, which provides up to ninety-nine point nine uptime, uptown time and redundant geographically diverse data centers for disaster recovery and ten gigabytes of data for the city. GeoDecisions will host all GeoPlan Web for the city in the platform mentioned above, and the city will own all of the data. Whereas, all software and hosting fees are included in the GeoPlan annual license fee. The license, the annual license fee for two years and beyond will be three hundred seventy-five dollars per user. Be it further, hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Williamsport that the mayor and city controller be authorized to execute the contract between the City of Williamsport and GeoDecisions. Mr. Ray informed me that I had to make, he made a typo, should say GeoDecisions, and I think you have something different. So, do we have to make amendment?
Mr. Libin, you indicated no, just for the record, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
No move.
Second.
A motion in a second. Mr. Ray, how are you?
Got you back. Good evening. The resolution before you, for your consideration is to upgrade the, the aging codes, records management system software to a new version. The work's to be done by GeoDecisions, and this was reviewed by Finance and Public Works and passed on with a full recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Smith from Public Works, please.
I reviewed this on Tuesday, and what this is, is to update the GeoPlan of the city that we currently have, which is quite a number of years old. The company that Justin has given us to approve is the GeoDecisions Company in Camp Hill, PA, which is the company that currently hosts what we're currently using. This has not been updated in, how many years was that, Justin? You told us the other day, I don't remember.
The last update that I can, that, that I can see was probably done four or five years ago, and that was just a minor update at that point.
Right. So, what this is, is updated software that will work with the current software that we have, updating information that the Codes Department and John Grado's department can both utilize. So, this was kind of a, a no-brainer to upgrade, and one of the questions, obviously, we had before it went to Finance is, where's the money coming from? And Justin provided that, actually, Joe Girardi provided where those dollars are going to be coming from. He does have that money available in a budget, so it is a budgeted amount of money to be able to do this. And again, this is one of these resolutions, it's kind of a no-brainer that we have to do to keep up with current technology and be able to utilize that data for both Codes Department and economic development and so forth. So, we did pass this with positive recommendation to full council.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy from Finance?
Finance also passed this along with a positive recommendation to the full body of council, with the note that it is unfortunately both more money initially for the upgrade than we've been paying for the software, and then also probably something around triple the amount of money on an annual basis for the, the annual license than what we've been paying. However, on the bright side, we will get more functionality instead of some city costs which just go up every year and we don't get anything more for them. So, you know, we do have a number of kind of important changes. The, the program itself will look very, very similar, which is actually why Codes decided they wanted to continue with the same software. However, the ability, the, the software being web-based at this point means that when there's an update made to one element of it, it can pretty easily be updated, be sort of pushed out to all the various and center users, correct, Justin?
Correct. So, anytime somebody makes a change, anybody else logged in the system will see that change real time.
Which is a pretty big difference when you're thinking about software like this. So, yeah, you know, it will be more expensive. It's unfortunate that it will be more expensive, but on the bright side, we will be getting a, a superior version of the same software for Codes and the other users within the city to use. And Joe has the money. Next year, it'll be our problem to find it, or the administration's, but, okay.
All right, thank you. Other comments or questions of members of council? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Wa, Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. I believe, unless I've meant something, then we can go back down to number 20, certificates appropriate for HARB. I think I've got that right. So, we have a variety of items here. One is for 322 Campbell Street, including some painting and repairing 300 Campbell Street, some repairing of railing and rotted wood and painting, 506 West Third Street, painting and repairing, 854 West Third Street, excavating and pouring new footers and attaching railing, and 329 Maynard Street, replacing some window and door sills and other repairs and painting. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the HARB's recommendations on those items?
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those certificates are approved. Next item on the agenda is except for filing. We have quite a long list. I think Mrs. Frank was glad to see us gone for a while, so she could get caught up here. I'll need a motion in a second for the following, Public Works commit, to accept for the following, Public Works meeting minutes of May the 10th and June the 6th, 2016. Finance Committee meeting minutes of May the 10th, 2016. Housing Needs of May the 10th. Historic Preservation meetings of June 15th, 2016. Ad hoc Committee on Split Tax of June 14th, 2015. Recreation Commission meeting minutes of July 25th, 2016, and August 8th, 2016. Brandon Park Commission minutes of May the 17th, 2016, and June 16th. Shade Creed Commission of May 17th, 2016. Public Safety Committee meeting minutes of June 7th, 2016. Controllers Report for July 2016. WMWA and Sanitary Authority meeting minutes of May 25th, June 22nd, and July 27th, 2016, and HARB meeting minutes of July 19th, 2016. Can I have a motion in a second to approve these for filing?
No move.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Mrs. Katz?
On the Williamsport Water Authority...
On the Williamsport, uh, Water Authority's minutes, I think Mark Mahoney would rather really have his name, Mark Maroney. They have his name misspelled con, and constantly as present.
Can I take that as a friendly minute, Mr. Sillister?
Their minutes.
Oh, it's their minutes?
It's their minutes, it's their minutes.
Um, yes, we'll take that under advisement, then. Somebody pass that along to the Water Authority. Uh, um, uh, any other comments or questions on those except for filing? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are accepted for filing. Next item on the agenda is announcements. Next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be held on Thursday, September 15th, uh, at 7:30 in City Hall Council Chambers. Um, other upcoming meetings, uh, include, I should say, uh, City Hall is closed for Labor Day on Monday, September 5th. Uh, meetings include Tuesday, September 6th at noon as Public Safety, uh, Monday, September 12th at noon as Fair Housing, um, Tuesday, September 13th at 10:00 AM as Blighted Property, at noon as Public Works, 3:30 is Finance, and then next is Wednesday, September 14th, uh, at 3:30 is ONE Pension Board. Thursday, September 15th at 10:30 AM is Zoning Hearing Board, at 4:00 PM is Board of Health. Um, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have any other comments from members of council? Mrs. Katz?
Yes, I'd like to say, these past two weeks have again put our great city in the international limelight. We had three fantastic events, not counting the series. The Grand Slam Parade was as great as ever, and this parade came about from Governor Rendell, and the first parade was put together by a company from Allentown, and the governor also gave us seed money, which then was turned over to the chamber, and they have done a great job ever since. The next event was the Trade and Transit to the Next Generation. Mr. Nichols has again provided our city with another cornerstone. This went from being a deck to the citizen-friendly asset, and we thank you for, and we also thank you for, on that fateful day at Bon Jovi's, I thought we really lost Mr. Nichols to, uh, heart palpitations. Um, the voices of Matt, Dave, Charles, Tony, and Bernie wanted a surface lot, not a deck. They saw a vision, and we all thank Bill for bringing this vision to fruition. Then we had the Williamsport Welcomes the World. This came about by the mayor when he realized that the businesses did not benefit from Little League. The city partnered with the chamber, and this incredible event came to be. With all these events came so much work from the city. Tom Sillow, you and your department whipped the city back into shape after each event. You would never know that thousands of people were on our streets, and our, our Police and Fire Department were also front and center. I want to thank Cindy, Linda, Vicky, Cindy, Jason, Catherine, and all the, the volunteers that put all these events together. Thank you for making everything such a success.
You're here. Other comments or questions from members of council? Mayor, you or your administration, any comments? Thank you. Uh, any comments from the general public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.